Tony, if you're listening, we're gonna start.
Okay, having a quorum, I would like to open the September 9th, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Cotto, would you please call the roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Larson is absent. Commissioner Jacobs also absent for now. And Chair Bartlet?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Cotto, under preliminary matters, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
Yes, I have an announcement. On the 14th of October, we were gonna be coming back to you with the Highway 101 update, the construction update. And there are some, well, there's some potential changes coming to that project. And I don't know if you know this, I'm not that familiar with it, but between Salinas and Milpus, I think there was gonna be an auxiliary lane, and there's a potential of changing that to be actual travel lanes. And so, the 101 Subcommittee is of the Planning Commission, still is in effect. It's Bruce, Charmaine, and Deborah as the alternate. And you may be called on before the 14th to look at some potential designs for that.
Okay.
So that's my one announcement.
Because I think the original plans that we saw was an auxiliary lane, because at that point, the Milpus Bridge northbound hadn't been widened to three lanes. Now there's three lanes, I think they can make it a through lane all the way.
Right, there, yeah, I'm not that familiar with what exactly is going on, but...
Right, okay. Well, let us know, but at least we have the Subcommittee in place, then.
Correct.
Okay, great. Any other appeals or anything else since we met last?
No, no appeals yet.
Okay, okay. All right. With that, I'll open public comment for anything that's not on today's agenda. We do have people in the public, but I think they're waiting for the real program. So I'll close public comment. And our first item, then, is a discussion item, and this is gonna be a webinar on how form-based coding can transform cities and towns. And I know some of us have availed ourselves of some seminars on form-based coding. Myself, Commissioner Jacobs, and I know Betty Weiss also attended one about a year and a half ago in Ventura. So this will be kind of make up ground for us, but I think we can maybe add or trigger some of the discussion after the webinar. So it's good information. Hopefully, people can really take note of what's going on. And I think it's very timely that we have it now while we're still in the throes of the Plan Santa Barbara process. So with that, Danny, I guess we're gonna take our seats in the front row while you load up the webinar, then?
Please, and there's a couple over there, please help yourself.
Great, thank you. That's gotta be gone before we leave.
Welcome, everybody. Hello, I'm Kappa Hoyt, Executive Director of the Form-Based Codes Institute, and it's my pleasure to welcome you to How Form-Based Codes Can Transform Cities and Towns. FBCI is a not-for-profit organization with a board comprised of leading practitioners in the fields of urban design, architecture, planning, and land use law. As today, FBCI board members volunteer their time and expertise to advance the knowledge and use of, and develop standards for form-based codes as a method to achieve a community vision based on time-tested forms of urbanism. Our website provides access to much free information and lists the courses we teach at various locations across the country. Planner Bill Spakowski will begin today's session. He'll be followed by architect/urban designer Dan Perolick, and attorney Sam Poole will finish out the presentation. We set aside the final 15 minutes to respond to your questions and to give you answers. Please type in your questions during the session. I'll be watching for these and present them on your behalf to our faculty. Now, on to Bill Spakowski. Bill?
Good afternoon, good morning. I'm speaking to you from Fort Myers, Florida today. I'm gonna be opening this by talking about how form-based codes differ from conventional zoning. Conventional zoning, although it varies from community to community, has many common characteristics across the country. When, I wanna begin, though, by talking about how zoning has evolved the way it has, because there's been some curious changes through time. This cartoon is about 35 years old, and basically shows the way zoning looks to the outer world, some kind of incredibly sophisticated process. But in this case, the planners realize it's not even working throughout all its complexity to create the kind of communities that our general plans say that we're trying to create. Basically, what happens is each time there's a problem in the community, that's solved through a land use regulation, that new regulation gets added on to the mass of regulations, and we end up with something that is pretty hard to understand, except somebody who lived through all of that. The critique of zoning has been going on a long time. Louis Mumford was an early and vocal opponent of zoning, and he explained it as suffering from a sin of not understanding that neighborhoods need to be balanced, that neighborhoods need to be like a microcosm of the city with all kinds of uses within each neighborhood. And zoning made it very easy, because it's done in such a broad-brush way to completely get that and have many neighborhoods actually made up of just one or two uses. In the mid-1960s, Richard Babcock, land use attorney from Chicago, wrote about what he saw as the flaws of zoning. He represented primarily landowners caught up in what he called the zoning game. He pointed out that the public likes zoning. The public doesn't have a bad reaction to zoning. They see it as something their local government does that protects their communities, but professionals often look down on it. And even planners and planning schools often don't teach zoning, don't teach how zoning can be helpful or harmful toward creating our communities. Planners treat it as a cretinous member of the planning family. Ouch. The part of the reason that zoning is the way it is has to do with the time period in which it emerged. In 1926, it was the equivalent of 2006. Eight years earlier, we had a real estate bust of magnitude at least as great as the one we've gone through in the last couple of years. And coincidentally, it was that very same year that the Supreme Court finally got around to reviewing zoning and accepting it as legal and viable, basically the very same year. So after the real estate crash of 1926 came the Depression, World War II, and basically a long period of time when nearly nothing was built in our country. And that was the same period when zoning was spreading rapidly from community to community. But the new zoning regulations didn't have much effect in the early years, because there was so little being built. And it was somewhat later that the problems with that approach became more apparent. Euclid itself, the zoning decision that gave the name to what we now call Euclidean zoning, actually was not that unusual or peculiar, or in any way harmful. It regulated the heights of buildings, and the size of buildings, and the uses of land, pretty much the same components of zoning today and of form-based codes today. When this case was being argued before the Supreme Court, this was described as the fundamental, what zoning fundamentally was. It wasn't can you have separated uses that we think of as Euclidean zoning today. It was can a city or a county break its jurisdiction into geographic districts and regulate differently within each district. It's really not that different than having a different sort of speed limits on different kinds of roads, but because of the potential for abuse, this hadn't ever been clearly found acceptable by the Supreme Court. And the same principle, of course, underpins all zoning and all form-based codes today as well. At the same time, and the same people who were promoting zoning wrote the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act for the Department of Commerce. And that original act that authorized communities to establish zoning basically talked about districts and having uniform regulations for each kind of buildings throughout each district, the very same powers that today authorize form-based codes through all this conventional zoning. Interestingly, this very period, this 1920s period, was actually a high point in urbanism in the United States. And there are, of course, many scams and many failed developments, and also many of our finest neighborhoods were laid out and constructed in this particular time. So the birth of zoning, there was nothing inconsistent with traditional urbanism, as we would describe it today, and zoning. In Manhattan, we had what might be considered one of the earliest form-based codes, in that the zoning code itself had very much, very strong form-giving impacts. This image is by architect Hugh Ferris, famous illustrator, when he was creating studies to show how the new New York zoning code, what kind of buildings could be built under it. And he showed in a whole series of sketches like this, all the different ways that the same code could be exercised by developers. However, there was that long period, of course, when nothing was being built, after World War II, when development began again. We were still a mass transit society with incredible hyperbole. New mass transit systems were still being built around the country. However, at the very same time, of course, cars went from being a curiosity and something used for recreational purposes, but began to be seen as the way out, the way out from doubling and tripling up with relatives during the Depression and the war, a way out of rundown housing in the city, the way to something better that we hoped the least would be better. Of course, the most commonly thought-of example of what was better was communities like Levittown, where extreme mass production was brought into the housing industry. Very small homes were built, starter homes designed for people to finish as they grew their families and could afford to do so. That kind of segregation of land uses that we first saw at Levittown also brought about the first concentration of commercial activities instead of being spread out through a community. And we saw shopping centers first coming into play. Now, I wanna show you how conventional zoning worked or didn't work in this particular scenario. In the, this is the same view I just showed you from above. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see in the red, with the red boxes, those are the property lines of those conventional detached, single-family homes that I showed you a minute ago. That little white boxes within the red, the white boxes was the zoning envelope that was defined by front, rear, and side setbacks. Other than the segregation of uses, that was the primary regulation for these homes. And the new homes were built within that envelope and expanded through time with additions out the front, and out the back, and out the side. And really, this kind of very simple zoning was perfectly acceptable and reasonable for this particular kind of development. The problem came when that same simplistic zoning was applied to commercial parcels. When you see the red box there, the larger red box, that's a commercial parcel, and it had the same kind of zoning rules. It had front and side and rear setbacks, which created a zoning envelope that looked like this, covering nearly the entire property. That was nearly the sum total of the guidance that the zoning code gave toward how commercial development would take place. So in other words, the buildings could be placed nearly anywhere on the property. And that met the code and would get approved. So over, this is a case where the conventional zoning tools did nothing to help the community create its form. It was really up to the real estate market and the individual decisions of investors. In the residential areas, this is what it looks like today. It came out pretty well, other than the total single use, but actually came out well. It was in the commercial parcels that still, to this day, look pretty much the same way that the way they did when they were built, without any urban form, without any mixing of uses. Our land development regulations address three different layers, or they should or could address three different layers of our community. One is actual creation of those new streets in the first place. And the second is the division of the private property facing those streets into lots. And the third is the actual building and development on each lot. Now, our zoning codes today tend to focus very much on the third portion, on the buildings and what goes on within the buildings. Yet, it's fair to say that those first two are primary building blocks of urbanism, that to a great degree, by conventional zoning, are left off or only very lightly regulated. And that's something failing in our current codes that is widely accepted today. Now, when those streets are originally laid out, planners will look at this picture and think, this is us out there creating our new community, but I'm pretty sure that's the real estate people doing it. But at least at this point, there was an understanding that the creation of that street network was fundamental to our community. There are great discussions in the planning literature at this time over street layouts. And Clarence Perry talked about, in the left, the Manhattan grid, the terrible, boring Manhattan grid, streets leading nowhere in particular, compared to his preferred view on the right, leading to places where people go. That was, this was the planning discourse of the 1920s. And really, either of these are reasonably acceptable. And we fast forward 80 years, and the planning discussion we have today about streets is in the bottom half of the slide. On the left, we have the suburban cul-de-sacs, the dendritic pattern. And on the right, we have something that looks pretty much like what Clarence Perry was promoting in the 1920s. Instead of two reasonably acceptable alternatives, we have one that's had very, very bad effects on our development and our dependence on the automobile and our overloading of our major streets. Through time, by not regulating the street pattern, we've seen the waves of fashion, fashion of street patterns. Southworth and Owens did this study where they compared the predominant street patterns and the number of decades and the number of intersections that were created, showing basically how it got to those boring streets going to nowhere to today's patterns. And what we find is the realization that the today's patterns aren't working so well. In some areas, even conservative land use state like Virginia is now, this unusual of Virginia, the streets are actually maintained by the state rather than by local governments, that the local governments, that the state is actually saying enough is enough. We need to be making sure that these new neighborhoods have interconnected streets rather than constant dead-end streets. So even in Virginia, things are changing, and we see that echo all around the country. Within the planning profession, we have a number of different people who've created indices of how to evaluate, how to measure the interconnected, the interconnectedness of subdivisions. And by having an index like this, we actually can, a government can actually regulate the connectedness of new developments by running the simple formulas and tests. So we have the tools now to go back to a more connected street pattern. Now, to the bigger picture of how the codes differ, when we refer to land development codes, we're talking about zoning regulations and subdivision regulations. In many states, those are two completely separate bodies of law. In many other states, they're basically just two different components of the same code. But as time has evolved, this separation of incompatible uses, which was one of the factors in the original Euclid zoning ordinance, has become to be probably more important than any of the others. And important enough that it's causing us serious problems, however well it works for suburban development patterns. Form-based codes are a new name, but not really a new technique. We see some of the form-based techniques back to the 1920s, and some codes much earlier than that in other places around the world. But they are, when used together, they are the primary method that we have to serve this rebirth in our country in creating good urbanism, not just for big cities, but for great towns and villages as well. Now, some other differences between the two types of codes. It's actually fairly easy to borrow a conventional zoning code from somewhere else. And it's, there are three or four books, several published by APA, and others by attorneys, organizations, that are some pretty well-written model zoning codes that you, of course, they have to be adjusted to fit to an individual community, but 90 or 95% of them can be applied, and often are applied, without much thought to the place that it's being applied to. Comparing, compare that to form-based codes, which are explicitly about implementing a physical plan for a particular place. You can look at form-based codes from other places and borrow parts and ideas, but because it's based on a physical plan, you really can't borrow a physical plan from a place unless it's very, very comparable and the goals are the same. In conventional codes, there's a, on the larger lots, there tends to be a very randomness of where buildings are built. If the main regulation is that the floor area, floor-to-area ratio is 1.0, you can have, in the left photo, the left drawing, you can have the first building on the far left, or you can have the tall building in the center, if floor area ratio is your primary regulatory measure. On the contrary, form-based codes tend to be very prescriptive and pay a great deal of attention to how buildings are placed on their lot. Another difference is that conventional codes often ignore streets. Certainly, the zoning portion of land development regulations tend to not regulate the streets at all. The streets are handled by somebody else. Some, many zoning codes actually, if you look at the zoning map, they actually show the zoning districts up to the middle of the street. But that's just a way to simplify the map-making. And very rarely do zoning codes actually control what goes on in the street, whereas form-based codes tend to treat the public space, the streets, and the buildings that front on them in a unified way, so that they complement each other, instead of conflicting with each other. Another difference is zoning tends to be prized across very large areas with a relatively broad brush. And the zoning map on the left, from Sarasota County, Florida, everything in red is a single zoning district. Includes large shopping centers, small shopping centers, small businesses, and multifamily, all within a single district. A form-based code is nearly always much more detailed than most zoning codes, being very specific about the placement of streets. And the differentiation between a parcel that might be only four or five blocks large, between what happens on different parts of that parcel. Form-based codes tend to be highly illustrated, have lots of diagrams. Conventional codes don't, although we're seeing these days that conventional codes are increasingly using illustrations to help define terms and help illustrate something that might be perfectly clear to a person who's oriented to words, but one also showed in a drawing can be much clearer, especially to the layman. Conventional codes tend to over-focus on how land is used, and tend to, as a general rule, sort of micromanage what happens within buildings. And certainly, control over what happens in buildings and on property is a part of our land use regulatory system that always will be, and is a part of form-based codes as well. But it's no longer the primary organizing factor about how the code is gonna work. This is the definition that the Form-Based Codes Institute has evolved to put in as few words as possible what a form-based code is. We're talking about alternative to conventional zoning, and we're talking about regulations that are adopted into city and county law. Many of the early form-based codes actually were established by developers and enforced through covenants on their property rather than through law. But when we talk about form-based codes in this context, we're talking about those that have been adapted for government regulations. I wanna run through a couple steps of how a community, one way that a community might go from a conventional code into a form-based code, what are the, like, the earliest steps? This is a, this is the zoning map. The black lines are streets, and running from the lower left to the upper right is a major arterial road. Everything in pink is, yes, commercial, your basic commercial pattern, with the brown and the green are varying levels of residential behind. Now, this community is somewhat blighted, been downed out for 40 years, poised for redevelopment. And the concept is, how do you, how do you take the initial steps? And the most basic step in laying out either new community or revitalization of communities that are gonna be going through change is by identifying the basic pedestrian shed, the basic amount of land that's comfortably walkable for most people. And that's the quarter-mile radius, which you see, shown here by, by these circles. By doing that, and determining about what that walking distance is, that comfortable distance is, you can actually go then and identify the centers and the most intense portions within each of these pedestrian sheds. And by doing that first, you're actually able to structure the redevelopment of that community and get away from the constant strip commercial into more concentrations of higher-intensity uses near the major intersections and within the major, centered on the pedestrian sheds. By doing that, and this is just a diagram, not actually showing buildings, but showing the red as the most intense areas in this redevelopment plan, you actually can begin to get a sense of how the redevelopment pattern would take place. And only when you have this basic structuring done, can you go to the next steps of actually trying to draft the alternative to zoning that would let a community like this evolve. I wanna conclude with a couple comments on hybrid codes. We see this reference to hybrid codes a lot of places, and I think it's a very confusing... very confusing, uh, confusing issue because when we think of hybrids, if you, if you think of a, a Prius, you think, oh, this is something that's good and it's economical and efficient, and it's the cutting edge. Uh, whereas within new urbanism in particular, hybrid is, uh, is a negative. It's, it's, um, sticking a front porch on a snout house and, and calling it new urbanism. And so, uh, so what is a hybrid code? Is it, is it good or bad? There's a couple different meanings of hybrid codes. One, um, is a code that uses different techniques in different parts of the city. So you might have special zoning districts in your downtown and in your historic district that are clearly miniature form-based codes, and have conventional zoning codes in your more suburban neighborhoods. That's one kind of hybrid code. And frankly, most form-based codes are that kind of hybrid code. They don't attempt to transform the entire city. They attempt to transform those portions for which there is a, a community desire and accepted, uh, physical plan for transformation. The, uh, other definition of hybrid code is just mixing and matching. Uh, most of the individual techniques within form-based codes actually can be used, uh, in other portions of a conventional code, uh, to good advantage. Uh, but it's only when the techniques are used together in a concentrated way to implement a specific plan, uh, is when we would typically refer to it as a form-based code. At this point, I'm gonna turn the program over to Dan Perolik, and, uh, those of you who have questions, uh, please feel free to enter them into the chat window, and we will get to them at the end of our presentation. Dan?
Great, thank you, Bill. Good morning, everybody, or good afternoon, depending on where you're at. It's a pleasure to be with you here today. I'm gonna jump right into my presentation. Um, I, I like to talk in this DBC course about, yeah, one thing is enforcing form-based code as an alternative to conventional zoning. And then, secondly, just the form-based code as a really effective tool to implement reinforced walkable urbanism. And I'm gonna start with a slide that Bill showed you a little bit earlier in terms of the new definition for the Form-Based Code Institute, but I like to start my presentation with this slide because I think, um, we fairly recently revised this definition. And the most important aspect of this definition, I feel, is we're, we're getting, we're seeing a lot of what was being called form-based codes, but it was basically just adding small elements of form, um, to an otherwise conventional code. And I think, um, what's, what's strong about this definition is saying that instead of, um, uh, use being the organizing principle for the, the code, that, um, the physical form and the intended type of place needs to be the organizing principle and the overall structure of the code as well. The other thing that we're seeing is that, um, uh, so in terms of why is, uh, re-conceiving zoning necessary, um, especially as, as we started doing form-based coding at a citywide scale in terms of, uh, rewriting, uh, complete development codes and integrating a form-based code into them, um, I, I think we're all realizing more and more that the, the current zoning system is, is really quite broken and it's defaulting to sprawl. And secondly, um, current zoning provides, uh, a lot of barriers when you sit down and analyze codes to revitalization of historic downtown historic neighborhoods, in addition to the creation of new walkable urban places through redevelopment. Um, there's some pretty amazing, um, uh, statistics out there in terms of the demographic shift. Um, uh, by twenty forty, and this is a statistic from Chris Nelson, uh, that seventy-four percent of American households are not gonna have children. Um, seventy-five percent of seniors who currently live in single-family detached houses, uh, more than half of them are gonna move into a special housing and walkable urban environment. And then fifty per, one percent of market in any given community is still living in a city or close to the city as opposed to the suburbs. And as well, just to close that, thirty to forty percent of any given market in any city typically want walkable urbanism, and only five to ten percent of walkable urban housing options or living options are actually being provided. And so there's a huge demand, pent-up demand for these walkable urban environments. So I'm gonna, uh, next talk about, walk you through fairly quickly the form-based code component. Um, first of all is the regulating plan. And upon first glance, uh, the regulating plan looks quite similar to a conventional zoning map. But if you look, look more closely, the primary difference is really that the zoning, the regulating plan is regulating places and not uses. Um, if you look up on the upper right-hand corner, it's the zoning district. Um, it's really about each one of these, um, mass zones being about an intended type of place or intended, uh, urban form in terms of, in this instance, it's town center, neighborhood general, and, and it could also be, uh, organizing principle of the transect and the intended type of place. So I like to show two different slides in terms of why this is important, because in a, in a drivable suburban environment, um, the picture on the left-hand side, you see a restaurant. And on the right-hand side, you can also see a restaurant in a walkable urban environment. And in the left-hand side, in a drivable suburban environment, uh, the, the context is very, very much about use, and the use needing to drive the regulation. But in the walkable urban environment, the, the ultimate driver in terms of regulation is the intended, uh, urban form and not that in the restaurant just happening, the use happening would be sec, secondary and supplementary to that. Um, the primary, uh, component of, of, uh, of form-based codes is building form standards. This is the, the component that most people think of when they think of form-based codes. Um, one of the real driving, uh, emphasis behind form-based coding, I guess in particular in our practice, is that the building form standards are very graphic and easy to understand. Um, all of the information, or a large percentage of it, is put into, in the table, very refined tables. Most tables are tied back to, uh, to the graphics and the intent of the information of each of those tables. Um, our codes in particular have a typical four-page, uh, uh, four pages within for each one of the intended zones. Um, I'm not gonna get into a lot of the detail on each one of these pages. I just, uh, uh, would, uh, invite you to go to the Form-Based Code Institute webpage and look at our, some of our codes, as well some of the other codes on the webpage, and look at the building form standard content. But what we're typ, typically regulating here is building placement, um, the intended use type and height on the first page. And then the second page, we jump, jump to parking, in terms of the parking requirements as, as well as parking placement. And we talk about encroachment and frontage type. And then in the second spread, it's really jumping into, um, the first page being the land use table. And the second page, uh, in that spread being, um, the, an illustrated intent of that particular form-based zone. And we've actually, um, been able to typically get the land use tables within our form-based codes onto one page. That fourth page with the graphic on it tends to be a, a spillover page, in some instances where we've had to have that, uh, refined land use table spillover to the second page. And so, the other intent of the building code standard is really, um, very prescriptive regulation and making the code easy to use and to understand for, for all different types of users, whether it be a developer or the administrator of the form-based code. And the next components are the public space standards, as Bill reinforced in his presentation. Um, we're looking here at both thoroughfare standards and civic spaces. Um, and the most important, um, uh, emphasis that we, uh, talk about within our presentations, that each one of these, uh, different types of civic spaces need to be appropriately calibrated along the transect in terms of the portability, in terms of size, scale, uh, design approach, and the way that it's integrated into the neighborhood. And, um, I think this, in this next slide, I'd just like to show that there's a little bit of a comic relief that, um, in terms of civic spaces, that not all, um, uh, contexts are created equal. This gets back to making sure that your spaces, civic spaces are calibrated back to the context along the transect. And as you're designing places and coding for them, you think about the different ways that, for instance, in this example, that a kid can, um, entertain themselves and, and recreate within an urban context versus a more suburban context. Um, and each one of them is, plays an important role in the way these places function. Um, in terms of the thoroughfare standards, um, street standards, and I would say ninety-nine percent, if not all, communities across the country are not a starting point for placemaking. And so we need to start at thoroughfare standards as the, the, the starting point for creating walkable urban environment. Um, form-based codes, uh, it's actually a similar, similar slide to what Bill had shown, uh, get very specific about the detailed design, uh, elements within these thoroughfares. And what I, what I say in terms of street standards is that the details really do matter, that plus or minus a foot or two in a travel lane, or minus a foot or two on a sidewalk makes a huge difference in the way that an urban environment functions or does not function, and, uh, cannot be underestimated in terms of a specific, uh, regulation of thoroughfare standards. Um, and I like to show this slide in terms of pedestrian safety and tying that back to street with, in street design, that, that, um, uh, that under, sorry, at twenty miles per hour, we're talking about pedestrian auto accidents, at twenty miles per hour, um, five percent of pedestrian auto accidents, um, result in death of the pedestrian. But you can see there's a really drastic spike when you jump up to thirty miles per hour. Um, accidents at thirty miles per hour between pedestrian and automobile result in forty-five percent, um, fatalities, uh, um, during those accidents. And then there's another really, uh, dramatic increase at forty miles per hour, where there's a pretty good chance, eighty-five percent chance that the pedestrian's gonna die, um, in the auto pedestrian accident. So this, this ties back, uh, directly to the, the desire to create walkable environment and safe environment for pedestrians and creating streets that, uh, that basically slow cars down and, and reinforce the desired type of split. The next component is, uh, frontage type. And, uh, I'm gonna jump into a couple of images. Uh, frontage types are really the, uh, point at which, uh, we talk about the public realm, which is typically the sidewalk, um, interfaces with the building or becomes the private realm. And this really cannot be underestimated. And it's basically the way that the building engages the street and the sidewalk. And you can see a, the fairly typical frontage type in terms of a, a shopfront in a little work context. Every community that we go into has a unique history of frontage type. And so, um, this is Albuquerque, the hometown Albuquerque, New Mexico, that has the great two-story galleries that the, our plan and code would wanna reinforce. Um, Ojai, California, has a, a wonderful history of arcades along their main streets. And so these could become a very, uh, uh, important design element and code element within the form-based code for this community. And, um, it's actually really quite surprising as a, as a designer about how, um, uh, how bad built-out frontages can actually be if they're not actually regulated. On the left, you can see what I call the Darth Vader building, where the building is built to the right of way, uh, has a large percentage of transparency, but it's not the type of, uh, engaging shopfront that any of us ever intend as we're creating, uh, master plans in form-based codes to regulate them. And on the right-hand side, it's just a really confusing, um, interface between the building and the sidewalk, where it's really unclear whether it wants to be an urban building or a suburban context, where they have landscape buffer between the building and the, the sidewalk itself. And those are just tied back into a, a palette of frontage types that have a series of regulations that tie back into the code. Um, a large percentage of our form-based codes, uh, have building types, uh, integrated into them. Um, we feel that building types are really integral and important, uh, creating walkable urban environments and thinking about them at a fine-grained scale. Um, we, we have, this gives us the ability to, um, integrate commercial building types and flexible building types, um, into our form-based coding, into a, in a very integral way to the ultimate result. And in terms of the residential type, we often talk about the missing middle. You know, we see a lot of single-family homes being built, and we see a lot of garden apartments being built. But what we don't see being built or even regulated in a lot of these communities we work in are the duplexes and the fourplexes, the mansion apartments and the bungalow courts. It's, um, sort of medium-density building types that could play a really important role to meeting that, um, pent-up market demand for walkable urban environment. And blocks and subdivision standards, um, this was a, a late addition to the Form-Based Code Institute's, uh, Form-Based Code components, but it cannot really be undervalued. The, the intent here is that lar, lots that are larger than a typical, uh, uh, urban block within a particular context need to be subdivided into a network of streets and blocks to reinforce the desired, um, and existing connectivity within a community. And so there needs to be standards within your form-based codes that, uh, specifically address these larger lots. And, and we find that even in a context, if you're, for example, if you're doing a downtown plan that, uh, may have very few large, um, undeveloped lots, undeveloped lots, that it's still important to put this in place, uh, for the, for the few large-scale undeveloped lots within a particular, uh, planning and coding area. And then the last component, um, in terms of required components, is really looking at administration. Um, we, we can't underestimate the, the value of, uh, refining and, uh, rethinking your administration process, um, and permitting process and making it very clear. Um, I often tell my clients that if you can't very easily map out, uh, the administration and permitting process in a, a simple diagram, that should most likely be rethought. And so this is something that, um, every form-based code should have as a component of the code itself. And there are a series of, um, what we call optional components that are often included in our code, and the more of these that you can include, the better. But we, due to typically budget limitations or maybe even political context, a lot of these are often left out. Um, I like to, uh, uh, talk about the, the Mr. Potato Head on the right-hand side of the slide in terms of just, uh, reinforcing with everyone that the form-based code is not about, uh, establishing architectural standards, but rather architectural standards are a, a separate component that can be integrated into form-based code. But the form-based code is primarily about defining that urban form or that potato, and the architectural standards begin to define the character of that urban form with a bit more detail or the elements within the potato. But these components, we're talking about architectural standards, green building standards, landscape, landscape standards, or any sort of other, uh, sustainabiddle, sustainability components that you might wanna integrate into your form-based code, and we're seeing more and more of this. So in terms of a form-based code process, um, in the book, we actually, um, introduced a, our typical three-step process, which is documenting, visioning, and assembling. And I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly, and I invite you to, to take a closer look at this within our book. Um, but, uh, the, the first step of this, uh, form-based coding process is documentation analysis. And you really can't underestimate this documentation process. We, very early on called, before form-based coding became a, a term that people were familiar with, we often talked about place-based coding. And these two different, um, steps in terms of the macro-scale analysis, or, which is sometimes called the neighborhood, district, and corridor analysis, um, enabled us to establish a framework at a citywide scale that a form-based code can reinforce. And then the second step is the micro-scale analysis, which is the documentation at a block, building, and, um, uh, sort of building-type scale. And we, um, you know, this is in, in, by many practitioners, this is called a diagnostic survey, where we actually, um, go into communities and pick sampling areas and document, like, for example, if we wanted to have a, if our form-based code was gonna have a T-three zone, a T-four, a T-five, we would document, um, existing conditions within a community, or maybe within another, good example, within the region, that, uh, begin to build the DNA of the form-based code, um, and relate it back to a place that people can, um, understand and relate to. And we often, in this mi, micro-scale analysis, take the city staff members out and really integrate them and make them an active part of this micro-scale documentation. This was an, uh, image from our Livermore, California development code update, which is in progress right now. Uh, the second step, uh, is a visioning. And, um, what, what, what I wanna reinforce here is you cannot underestimate the value of a highly detailed and prescriptive and heavily illustrated vision that your form-based code will rest upon. Um, uh, you really, without the vision, your form-based code really lacks, um, the community buy-in and the, the real clear direction and predictability that the form-based code is intended to come with. The little last step is simply the assembly. Um, after the, the visioning process, which, uh, may typically include a, anywhere from a four to eight-day charrette process, uh, the code content typically is begun at the charrette. And then after the charrette, we, um, refine that vision, but then jump into assembling the code document and the different elements of the code document. And, um, one of the real emphasis in our practice are, uh, thinking very clearly about the, the graphic design. design, as well as the coding within these documents. And I think there's some real value in thinking in terms of feasibility about how you approach a code and some very basic concepts that we talk about very specifically in our book that I invite you to take a look at. The next thing that I wanted to talk about is sort of the diverse applications of form-based codes. The really great thing is that as form-based coding is becoming more common, and more and more communities are thinking about it, and I think, I guess, the great thing is that both large-scale cities and towns, as well as more rural communities, are really thinking about form-based coding as a tool for them to use to reinforce their, the quality of life and the character of their communities. And, you know, form-based coding started very early on at an application of mostly a project-specific scale, which is a downtown master plan implementation, or a corridor revitalization, or a TOD planned around a specific proposed or existing transit stop. But what we're seeing now is as this application diversifies, that complete development code updates or integrating form-based code approaches, you can see this in the currently drafted Denver Citywide Development Code. We're doing the complete development code update and form-based code integration in Livermore, California, as well as Flagstaff, Arizona. You're also, we're also beginning to see form-based codes in terms of model code applications at a regional and even a statewide scale. I know Louisiana State, the statewide visioning is creating, currently creating a model code as a means for substantial implementation. And we're currently looking at the Lake Tahoe region and using a model code template to implement their regional plan vision. So to summarize, there's a lot of really good resources out there. If you haven't sort of flipped your way through the Form-Based Code Institute's website, I invite you to do that. If you, I, if you haven't read the book that Paul Crawford, Terrence Crowell, and myself co-authored, I highly encourage you to take a look at that. It's available either at our website, opstacoastdesign.com, or at amazon.com. And there's, just to mention, there's, on November 4th, there's the ABCs of Form-Based Codes that the Form-Based Code Institute will be teaching in Oakland, California. And for some really good information about the smart code and the transect, Smart Code Central is a really great resource for learning more about the smart code and transect applications. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Sam Poole.
Hello. See if I can make this work the right direction. So to summarize what Dan and Bill have been telling you, zoning is like a box of chocolates. You never know what place you're going to get. Form-based codes, on the other hand, acknowledge that you are building places that are designed to be preferred human habitat. So let's take a look at this fun stuff of integrating form-based codes within an existing regulatory structure and legal issues with form-based codes. There are five key considerations when you're thinking about integrating a form-based code into your existing zoning code. That includes the role of comprehensive plans, the basis in public health, safety, and welfare, and whether the code will be mandatory, optional, or floating. Your jurisdiction may have mandatory advisory or even no comprehensive plan requirements. If you do have a comprehensive plan, the law often requires that the land development regulations be in accord with or consistent with the plan. When you're integrating a form-based code, you need to consider whether a plan amendment is going to be required in your particular jurisdiction. In some jurisdictions, the comp plan can be sufficiently detailed, such as, so that the plan, in fact, becomes the land development regulation. If you're integrating a form-based code, consider adopting the form-based code as the comp plan amendment. And that's something that I did in the town of Marineland, Florida, back in 1992. And you've seen from Dan's examples, places in California, that the plan and the code can be actually one and the same. Let's go to Public Health, Safety, and Welfare. Well, advance the next slide.
Use the right arrow at the lower right corner.
I am.
Can you advance it from yours?
There it goes. Public Health, Safety, and Welfare. Police powers are the legal basis for any type of land development regulation, whether it's based on use or form. And we all talk about zoning in the same way we talk about Xerox. It's a brand of land development regulation. Just like Xerox is a topier, or Kleenex is a tissue, zoning is just one form of land development regulations. Form-based codes are another. Both are based on the police power, which has been interpreted by the U.S. Supreme Court to be broad and inclusive of spiritual and aesthetic values, as well as physical and monetary. And this is Justice Douglas's famous quote from 1954 addressing urban renewal. Let's see if I can. Well, hi. There it goes. When you're integrating a form-based code for a part of your city, say you're going to work on the Main Street area, you'll need to consider whether you're going to require that the form-based code be mandatory. And I strongly recommend that it be mandatory. I'll give you two examples of this integration that you can look, MUNI code, the city of South Miami, Hometown District, and also Downtown Kendall, which is in the unincorporated Miami-Dade County. Both are adopted mandatory form-based codes for specific sub-areas within the larger jurisdictions where the zoning map was changed. New regulations, including the review process, were adopted that suplanted the existing use-based code. Form-based codes can replace zoning in one or more geographic parts of your town, or if you Google Miami 21, that's Miami and the number 21, you can track Miami's ongoing efforts to adopt the form-based plan for an entire city. And I think that's the first time that I'm aware that it has happened at that scale. The option is, I don't know what it is, there we go, parallel codes. Alternative to mandatory is an optional code. It's pretty unsatisfying for communities that want to implement a new vision. Having a new suburban-style, big-box retail come into your Main Street under an optional code can pretty severely damage your efforts to redevelop as a pedestrian community. In fact, some opponents of Miami 21 are suggesting that it be optional for a period of years so they can secure their entitlements under the existing code and then sort of pick and choose which one they would prefer. The third alternative are floating codes. And that's the PUD approach. It's been used often in form-based codes. Miami-Dade County adopted a form-based code for traditional neighborhood districts as a floating zone in 1991. And this, the applicant applies to have the code land on her property, and if it's approved, the form-based code will supplant the underlying zoning. Let's turn to the legal issues to think about when you're preparing and adopting a form-based code. These eight issues are important for any land development regulation, and I'll touch on how each of them is addressed in the form-based code. I hope. There we go. First, what is the legislative basis for your current land development regulations? When you're considering a form-based code, some states have adopted specific enabling legislation, including Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, California, Connecticut. Some states encourage innovative land development regulations, Florida, Rhode Island, South Carolina, among them. The, here is the key point that, there's only one thing that you remember from what I say, and that is, all land development regulations are descendants of the State Standard Zoning Enabling Act promulgated by former Secretary of Commerce Hoover. No state that I'm aware of has taken the position that use-based or zoning codes are legal, but form-based codes require specific legislation. Some states have chosen to enact form-based enabling legislation, but none that I'm aware of have found it necessary. Just a point regarding home rule, if your town does not have authority to do zoning, then you probably don't have authority to do land development regulations based on form Just a reminder, there are overarching state and federal statutes that do not trump form-based codes, including fair housing, telecommunications, relupa, wetlands, endangered species, and the like. Come on. Okay. Nonconformities. When considering a land development regulation code change, you really need to focus on what's important to achieve in the community vision. Converting an active industrial area to add residential, or taking on the height reductions as part of the process, may not be essential elements of the code. So be careful in creating nonconformities. Keep in mind that with form-based codes, nonconformities will often be involving structures, not just uses. If your form-based code makes structures nonconforming, be sure to allow for a reasonable period of time for amortizing the structure. And a word of caution about creating nonconforming architectural styles: don't. A major issue, vagueness. It's critical for any land development regulation. Form-based codes offer a substantial advantage over zoning because they can be very place-specific and detailed. You've seen that from Bill and Dan's description. And again, if you look at South Miami or Downtown Kendall on MUNI code, you can see that those codes do a very detailed job describing the intended outcome. The shared community vision of placemaking can be clearly detailed and adopted just as readily as a zoning map. Strongly recommend that you avoid design guidelines that do not tell you if they are rules or suggestions. You see the quote from Garvin and Arroyo, a more recent example comes from the movie Pirates of the Caribbean, and that happens when Elizabeth Swan demands a right of parlay with the pirate leader under the Pirates' Code. And the pirate leader advises her that the code only gives rights to pirates, and besides, it's more of a guideline than a rule. Well, not knowing if a code provision is a guideline or rule is a real problem. It gives license to regulators to apply their own biases rather than implementing a clearly expressed vision. And I need to pause here and say that any resemblance of real-life regulators to pirates is purely coincidental. Watch out for terms in codes such as quality of life and community character. It's an open invitation for regulators and pirates. And finally, as you've seen from Bill and Dan's presentation, form-based codes can be very place-specific and precise through the adoption of illustrations, such as regulating plans, street types, building types. One word of advice, use the illustrations to convey the code point, and then use photographs to supplement the illustrations. The important point about uniformity in codes is the fundamental principle that we should all be treated equally under the law. The code should create an internally consistent district based on good urban design principles. PUDs generally in your codes will offer a good example of the internally consistent codes, that the rules within a PUD are generally the same for the same type of area. Okay, delegate. Delegation of authority by elected officials is critical for any code. Form-based codes do have, offer a distinct advantage over zoning because they have the capacity to clearly and precisely express the intent of the electeds in their adopted document. You've seen in earlier examples from Bill and Dan how a form-based code can translate a shared community vision into a concise legal document that is easily understood. Again, take a look at MUNI code, at South Miami, and Downtown Kendall for their approval process. And in both cases, you will see that applications for development approval that are consistent with the adopted form-based codes are approved administratively. There is no public hearing because the public was already very clear about the desired outcome in the public hearing where the plan and code were adopted to implement their vision. If your code is clear and precise, applicants choose to follow the adopted vision, the need for review bodies is greatly reduced. And finally, another question about the town architect, and I differ a little bit from Dan on this, that I consider town architects the taste police. I would advise you to focus on the key elements of placemaking in your vision. Imposing a Western, or Mediterranean, or a classical architectural theme really is not that important in the placemaking process. Come on. Clear process is a matter of fundamental fairness for any land development regulation. Again, form-based codes have an advantage over use-based codes because they can be very clear and precise, and therefore administered administratively, a much simpler process. Just a caveat, not even in form-based codes, which can be place-specific, are you going to account for every situation? So there will still need to be the opportunity for variances, special circumstances, so the zoning and planning advisory boards will still have their place. Finally, Kelo brought about an even closer scrutiny of land development regulations, especially in the community redevelopment efforts. If you have a specific shared community vision that is detailed, that is achieved in an inclusive and transparent process, the implementing form-based codes can be embraced by the business community, the homeowners, developers, all elements in your community. Now, that's a lot of ifs, but keep in mind that both South Miami and Downtown Kendall form-based codes were actually initiated by the local chambers of commerce, and the homeowner associations participated in and strongly supported the adoption of those form-based codes. So just a reminder that good planning that is inclusive and is clear and concise is possible even in the post-Kelo world. I will pause there, and we can take, turn to questions.
Thanks. This is Carol. And let me throw a question back to Bill that came in pretty early on from Francis Hoffman. With regard to the view of mature Levittown, what did you mean, Bill, as it came out well?
Well, I was referring to the residential neighborhoods, to the individual blocks. The neighborhood streets are reasonably well interconnected, certainly very well interconnected compared with most of what's been built in the last twenty or thirty years. And the houses don't all look alike. They're not all the same size and quality, even though they all started out at six, eight-hundred square feet, very minimal. They've evolved through time in a way that a contemporary, heavily deed-restricted community never can. If that contemporary community starts out with a single price point, a single architectural style, a single size, it's likely to stay that way forever rather than evolve in with the surrounding community. I wasn't saying anything good about the vast sameness of Levittown or about the segregation of commercial uses.
So. Here's one from Ellie Casson. Are form-based codes best for new neighborhoods and greenfield development, or can they be used in existing neighborhoods?
This is Dan, and I can answer that question. That was one that I was, kind of had highlighted. I think the answer is really both. Form-based codes have proven to be really, are extremely effective in both creating new walkable neighborhoods, as well as in existing developed contexts. Form-based codes did start initially being applied mostly to the creation of new neighborhoods, but I would say eighty percent of our current form-based codes, if not ninety percent, are now for application in existing developed contexts, such as within developed codes or within a downtown master plan or a neighborhood master plan. And I think the thing to remember is, they, the form-based codes can be an effective tool to reinforce preservation in terms of the character of a place, evolution, which is small-scale change over time, or complete transformation. is small-scale change over time, or complete transformation of a context, and they can apply that, be either one of those two.
Carol, let me add to that. This is Sam, but the, I think that within existing urban areas, when you're doing redevelopment, since form-based codes typically are done in a charrette or an inclusive process, that they're far easier to implement than a change in zoning. So I think that they're particularly well-adapted to that circumstance, as we found in downtown South Miami and Kendall and most of the other places that they're now, many of the other places are now being applied today.
A question here from, oops, I just lost it, because another one popped in. A question from Carrie Stevens. We're working on a large suburban county. Most places seem to only provide form-based for a specific area, not community-wide. We do not have good parcel-level data. Have you encountered a situation like this, anybody?
This is Bill Spakowski. I'd say, I'd say that's very common. In a case like that, you're dealing with a large county, you probably are best off limiting your attention to certain places. I mean, I would first focus attention on, of course, anything in and around an existing or future transit station, for sure. Abandoned shopping centers that are well-located, but the buildings on them are obsolete. What's the next use of that property? Abandoned mobile home parks. Any kind of former industrial areas that no longer have uses to justify that quantity of land for industrial uses. If you focus your efforts on those opportunity sites, those transformation sites, I think you're going to have a better chance of succeeding than if you try and do something spread too thin over the rest of the community.
Here's another one from Brooke Harden. What is the effect of form-based code on the value of property understood to be conferred by conventional zoning that is separate, based on separation of use? So, effects on property values. Anyone want to jump in on that?
Well, this is Bill Spakowski. I think nearly all the form-based codes I've worked on have ended up basically increasing the value of the property affected by them. So obviously, in planning, you know, we're often not that lucky. We're often end up in dealing with plans and regulations that decrease property values or might decrease property values, and therefore we have major opposition from the landowners. Form-based codes often impose new regulations on owners. Don't get me wrong, if it's more prescriptive, it's more specific. On the other hand, that's, at the time a form-based code is created, it's a wonderful opportunity to eliminate rules that have been on the books that have affected property negatively and eliminate them at the same time. Excessive parking standards, stormwater standards applied to urban areas that were designed for, you know, regulations were designed for suburban areas. Form-based code is comprehensive enough that you're adding some rules, getting rid of some that aren't relevant anymore. It's actually surprising if the general effect wasn't positive on property values rather than negative.
Well, and I might add that I know Rick Bernhardt, Asheville-Davidson County, has been, stock of data and is showing that the, their character districts, which are really form-based code-coded districts, are, have increased in property value compared to similar conventionally-zoned districts. So just throw that out. The data isn't available yet, but it should be before long. Another question from Salman Hauser. Speak to the primary challenges getting developer and community support for form-based codes.
Just using Miami as an example, the inclusion of any and all interested parties is really critical to success and taking the time to educate the community. It really, if you're focusing on desired results at the outset, not on the code itself, what you're doing is creating the vision of an outcome that the, that the community wants to achieve. So getting all of those players at the table to participate and getting at least one elected official involved in the process is essential because when you're presenting your plan and your code to the community for adoption, if it's the first time the people sitting on the dais have heard it, you are going to be in major difficulty. So in Miami, there's been a major effort. In fact, the mayor has been the champion of the form-based code, has attended many, many community meetings, and the, I've lost count of the number, but it's in the hundreds of meetings that that planning team has had to be inclusive. So that's the key, is be inclusive in developing the intended outcome. Find an elected leader who is going to be the spokesperson. Make sure they're involved from the outset so that they speak from an informed position.
Thanks, Sam. This is a question from Casey Carter, who is in Fort Huachuca Army Post in southern Arizona. And Casey is asking, saying, the Army is transitioning to form-based codes, and we want to know, are any subject matter experts in developing form-based codes for military Anybody know that?
I was in the Corps of Engineers. Yeah, I know that this is in fact taking place, and I know the city of El Paso is currently working on a new code that would also involve a military base there, and they're working with Dover Colan Partners. But I don't know of completed form-based codes that have been applied to Army bases, and certainly there's no reason they can't be.
There are a number of examples of form-based codes that have been applied to bases that have been accessed under the program, converting them into civilian places. I was not aware that this was happening, but I think that it's an excellent opportunity to apply the principles of form-based codes. Military bases have the opportunity to offer very pedestrian environments, and people are living together in a much more closer situation than in a typical suburban environment.
Yeah, I would just add one thing, if you can, that in your planning of the base, I would just reinforce that the areas that are intended to be walkable urban environments should be designated in relation to areas that may be more industrial or less compatible or more auto-dependent components. And then focus the form-based code application in areas that are intended to be more walkable urban mixed-use environments.
There's a question from David Stewart. Are any of you aware if form-based codes have been applied in Canada? And I can answer that, at least start that off, that FDCI at Mississauga's request did, taught our introductory course in Mississauga, and I know they were working on a form-based code for Port Credit. I don't know if it's been adopted yet. Anyone else want to speak to form-based codes in Canada? Okay. Here's another question from Kashamby Shah, and apologies if I mispronounced that. Can there be a form-based code with very little design standards in terms of frontage? And then a follow-up there, also in large urbanized areas, implementation is important. Can implementation be detailed? So it's really two questions.
This is Dan. We have yet to do a form-based code that doesn't have frontage standards in it, and I would, I would say all of the effective form-based codes that others have written that we've reviewed all have frontage as an important component, so I would say that they are really an important part of the form-based code, and that's why we talk about them as a required I'm not really quite understanding completely the second part of that question.
I'll repeat it. In large urbanized areas, implementation's very important. Can implementation be detailed? So I guess the question-
I think perhaps the, this is the answer, and that is, when you're adopting a form-based code, the details that go into the code that are generally adopted, the illustrations that you saw from Dan and Bill can be extremely detailed and place-specific. And the code itself, if you look at the MUNI code site for the downtown Kendall plan in particular, there are actually links to the drawings that are adopted as part of the code. Sadly, the quality is not very good yet, but they are, they were actually adopted as part of the code, and they provide details like where the arcades are to be located and where the land is assembled, the open space within each parcel, which actually ended up being assembled into a larger, meaningful open space of parks and plazas. So they can be very detailed.
Carol, Hazel Boris has offered to answer the question on Canadian, if you can unmute her.
That's what I was just going to say. Hazel, well, just a minute, I'm going to send her a message.
Carol, can I answer the question about downtown examples?
Please do.
Because I think there are, I think the application of form-based codes to downtown is probably one of the most common applications that we're seeing. I guess one example that I'm really familiar with, because we did it, was for downtown Venetia, California, and the code actually won the Dree House Award a year ago, was available for download on the Form-Based Code Institute's website, the complete coded, and that was adopted, I think, a couple of years ago now. And there should be a number of other examples on the Form-Based Code Institute's website as well, but it's definitely a common application for form-based codes.
Right. Thanks, Sam. Hazel, are you available to join us, Sam? Okay, I'll, I'll call on you in just a minute, then. Hazel, I think-
I can respond to another question while you're dealing with that, Carol.
Please do.
There was an earlier question about when do you recommend design guideline overlay instead of rewriting the code? And I would say rarely. You've actually never seen the potential for a design guideline overlay to be nearly as effective as, I guess, the code amendment in terms of form-based code application. But I think the most important thing is to be able to analyze your existing zoning code and defining or creating a list of the barriers that are in place that are the intended sort of results that you're wanting to get, and then making sure your code amendment or the form-based code specifically breaks down those barriers, whether it be parking requirements or FBR or use requirements.
I'd like to add to that a little. The question was about, you know, when would you recommend design guidelines over rewriting the zoning code? There's two issues, I think. One is, when would you use a guideline rather than a regulation? Aside from the design issue, guidelines either are general or they offer a great deal of discretion, and in some communities that have a culture of giving authority to professionals to exercise that discretion, that might work. In most places, you end up with review boards made up of either laymen or professionals, which adds a whole nother level of complexity into the administration of the code, advertising times and delays, and the possibility that different people attend the different meetings, and therefore the interpretations change, or that the review board members want to impose their own view rather than the, design guidelines are supposed to be enforcing. So there's all kinds of problems there. The more general answer, though, I think is, when you would, when you might want to do that, is when the rest of your zoning code works well for the place and design is the only issue, or the main issue that needs attention. You don't have problems of, you know, incorrect parking standards or overly detailed use regulations or any of the other problems that form-based codes are meant to try and solve.
Hazel, speak to, to Canadian codes, to Hazel Boris?
Yes, hello. There certainly are several form-based codes that have been adopted in Canada, primarily in Alberta, around cities and towns surrounding Calgary. But additionally, there is a form-based code initiative in Winnipeg that's moving forward at the moment that you can read about at speakupwinnipeg.com. But certainly, there are several initiatives going on at the moment. I'm more familiar with the ones in western Canada because that's where I live, but obviously the ones also in Ontario, I think around Markham, but I'm not as familiar with the ones further east.
Here's Hazel. Another question from Christopher Selvig. Any example of the application of form-based codes to locations where snowfall is a primary consideration, speaking of Canada?
Yeah, this is Dan. To, we wrote a code for Seaboard Springs, Colorado, that got adopted last week that we obviously had to deal very specifically with snow removal. So you might want to take a look, because if you go to the City of Seaboard Springs website, it should be available on their site. And we're currently, actually Flagstaff, Arizona, right now, doing a charrette for a development code update, which will need to address snowfall and snow removal very specifically, because they have regulations in their downtown and their adjacent neighborhoods where there's no on-street parking through five months of the winter, and so we're needing to address that in terms of how these block order and environment functions.
Thank you. Here's one from Carrie Stevens. Have you seen a form-based code that has a minimum-maximum front setback instead of a build-two line?
Sure, they're relatively common. It's sometimes referred, in that case, it's sometimes referred to as a build-two zone. So a combination of a minimum and maximum setback is another way to accomplish a build-two line or build-two zone.
So. Here's one from Keely Solomon. Do form-based codes take more or less time to develop and adopt than traditional zoning?
This is Bill Spakowski again. Yeah, that's an interesting question. Certainly, we generally think of a form-based code as taking more work because it actually is customized to a location and isn't just taken off the shelf from another community and dusted off. On the other hand, though, when there is a physical plan for a place that has a lot of excited community attention, excited in a positive way, the process of getting the code adopted actually can be relatively smooth. I've certainly experienced and been part of conventional code rewrites that end up taking many, many years. And what typically happens is a consultant is retained, if there's nobody on the staff who's experienced in doing this, who then, you know, works for many months on his or own, and then presents this code to a public meeting to, you know, bewilderment of the planning commission, let's say, and are sent back to work on it without really being given clear instruction on what that means. And so there's certainly examples of conventional code rewrites that end up taking even longer than a form-based code with less positive effect.
I would just add to that, that if you are working to adopt the code relatively soon after you have agreed upon the vision for the community, that there is generally a lot of enthusiasm in both South Miami and downtown Kendall, as well as other places. The adoption was relatively quick following the agreement, the approval of the consensus vision for the community. The code simply became the implementation tool and was adopted without any real controversy.
CNU Colorado, U.S. Green Building Council, asks, without getting too detailed in the architecture, how can you suggest avoiding dark vader? Guess that one's for you, Dan.
I think that, right back to my frontage comment earlier, that I think, for instance, if you are in that condition, trying to recreate standards for shop fronts, I think there are very basic standards that you can write to prevent that from happening. I think one of the primary ones would be just the distance between entries. You don't have one long, sort of unbroken facade, but, you know, there's a, there's a delicate balance between sort of what to put into the frontage standards and what ultimately becomes a special standard. I would, if I were to address and try to address, approach that problem, it would just be regulated within the frontage standards and specifically the frontage standards.
But to be specific, as to the dark glass, if that was the question, certainly a regulation that specifies a minimum and maximum percentage of glass on a facade can and should be very clear about the transparency of the glass. And there's without question objective standards in the- And there's without question, objective standards in the glass industry as to how transparent glass needs to be, just the, not that the blackout glass doesn't have its place, but it's not right along the pedestrian frontage at high level.
I would add that my concern about adopting taste police as part of your land development regulations is not a comment about materials in particular, that perfectly all right to talk about the desire to use native materials, for example, in your community, or brick or building materials, or requiring, for example, an expression line between the first and second story of a building, requiring that buildings have 14 feet floor-to-ceiling on the ground floor. Those are all important architectural elements. What I'm concerned about is, of course, is the style issue where you adopt a Western theme and you've got some board reviewing a design to see if it's suitably Western. I think that's where you run into problems with architectural style.
Derek Burr asks, "How do Form-Based Codes deal with overhead power lines?"
This is Bill Spakowski. I can't think of any examples where they have, but there's, because Form-Based Codes do, you know, concern themselves with the public streets and the alleys, they do end up having the ability to regulate. I think the most difficult, the reason that a Form-Based Code is not the sort of the desired mechanism here is whether power lines are overhead or underground is a political and social issue that can be, the decision can be implemented through a Form-Based Code, but the decision really would end up being made outside that process, is cost, expense, aesthetics and everything else. I don't see any shortcut in a Form-Based Code, although I do see a way of using the code to implement the collective decision.
Casey Carter asks, "Will slides from this presentation be available for download?" And the answer is yes and no, I guess. The slides will not be available for download, but tomorrow I will be sending everyone, if not sooner, I will be sending everyone a new link to the recorded version of this webinar, and you will be able to view it multiple times, and we'll leave it up for you probably until April, or through April 14th, so you can see it multiple times and view it again. But it's not available for download into your computer, if that helps. And that leads me to another question that I saw, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who asked it, but it was about case studies or examples that are other information we've referenced throughout this. Here it is, Christopher Selvig, "Can a list of case studies mentioned in the presentations and any other good examples be available?" Certainly, a lot of these are on the FBCI website, which is FormBasedCodes.org. Would anyone else like to address that question?
Certainly, the last section of the Crawford Parola Form-Based Codes book has a dozen or 15 fairly detailed case studies that would be interesting, I'm sure, to the questioner.
Presenters, are there any questions I've missed that we should address? I think we've just about done it all. I'd like, in closing, to remind everyone that we, FBCI teaches a series of courses, three courses. There is a prerequisite course, it's either Form-Based Codes 101, Introduction to Form-Based Coding, or the ABCs of Form-Based Coding, the ABCs of FBCs, which is a one-day course. The previous one is a two-day course. The ABCs of FBCs will be taught in Oakland, November 4th, and you can register through our website. And the prerequisite then enables you to take either or both of our two additional courses. One is 201, it's a design-intensive course, Preparing the Form-Based Code, Design Considerations. And the third one focuses more on administration, it's FBC 301, Completing, Adopting and Administering the Code. We usually only give the 201 and 301 once per year, so don't wait around to get the introductory course if you want to take the other two. And people completing the series do receive a certificate from FBCI saying they did complete the series. In directing you to our website, not only are there case studies and examples of exemplary Form-Based Codes to which we've given awards, but also I encourage you to look at the long definition of Form-Based Coding, and which really explains what is a Form-Based Code. And there are a lot of things out there being called Form-Based Codes that really are not. And so, that definition, that longer definition and our checklist are a good way to tell how much of a Form-Based Code, a code that's been adopted, really is. And then finally, we have an RFQ template, so anyone wanting to seek assistance from consultants for a Form-Based Code, we strongly encourage you to look at our Request for Qualifications template and cut and paste that as you desire so that you really will be getting a Form-Based Code, not a pretend or faux Form-Based Code. Presenters, any other, anything else you'd like to say as we close?
No.
Looks like we're right on time. Thank you, everyone, and are so pleased that you joined us.
So, again, that was put on by the Form-Based Code Institute, and that's a webinar that actually now was televised, which they said was okay, but they wanted credit for it. Yeah, there is, there is a second webinar. It's 145 minutes, it's more advanced. I haven't actually previewed that one. And as you have your discussion, I'm going to go grab the flyer that kind of, so I can read it to you. And that's, there's a possibility, if the commissioner's interested, we have the room for next week at the same time, 1 o'clock, and we could watch that as a group again, or you could watch it individually. We can give you the password to go to the website and all that information. So, I figured after this discussion, we would, actually, you would decide whether you wanted to see it, the second one.
Great. Thank you, Danny. Well, I think that was a good overview. It certainly, you know, wasn't to the depth of the two-day that we attended in Ventura, but I think it gives a good taste of what it's about. And I'm glad that we at least have three of us here that did attend, so hopefully we can maybe fill in the blanks and answer questions that others may have, because I think there's a lot of terminology, such as the transect and other things, that they really didn't define. So, you're trying to listen to this program, and I think it probably leads to more question marks than answers for those that got the brief overview. So, are there any particular discussion points that people would like to start out with? Mr. Justice?
I've got a series of four or five questions, but I think it would be really helpful to get some initial reaction and perspective from Ms. Jacobs and the chair in terms of how Form-Based Codes fit in, how you think Form-Based Codes fit into the fabric of Santa Barbara, you know? How and why does it work? If it does work in Santa Barbara, where does it go? When does it happen? How does it get implemented? And is there a net benefit over cost of going through a process of institutionalizing such an approach in Santa Barbara?
Well, I think there's probably the three of us that can maybe answer different portions of that. I think some of the examples that we were shown in our seminar series of similar communities that really have a historic background, such as Grass Valley, where you really go in and you analyze and verify what is on the ground, what patterns do you want to see repeating, what things do you want to preclude, and you do it neighborhood by neighborhood and block by block. So, you're really categorizing a starting point. You're not starting from scratch. And then you can really sort of build on that network and design your code to really protect the things that you find to be valuable and how to emulate or enhance them with the new infill components. So, it really is, I think, valuable for a historic community because you really start out with your historic resources as your given condition and that you want to protect and enhance. So, I think, you know, it's different than doing a community from scratch, but I think it really allows you to create overlay zones if you're wanting to protect the downtown area first, and then maybe, you know, in our case, I think we considered it for Upper State Street. And I think for budgetary reasons, we weren't really able to go there, and we opted for, you know, the more efficient design guidelines, but then that just becomes more of a implementation headache with committees and so forth because it's all based on discretion and it's not about expressing what the desired effect is, it's more a description of what you don't want to have happen. So, maybe others can chime in, but I think that's maybe my overview. Ms. Jacobs?
Yeah, I would love to chime in. For those that don't know, Chair Bartlett and myself and Betty Weiss attended a Form-Based Code Institute in Ventura, because the city of Ventura is adopting Form-Based Codes in two of its districts, one being downtown and the other being a commercial corridor that is blighted, and this is a remedy for that. So, it was nice to have the expertise of the Form-Based Code Institute, but it was even better to have an on-the-ground example just as close as Ventura to see how does this get applied to a city, and both in its historic downtown and in an outlined commercial area. And just a little bit of my own history with Form-Based Codes. I first heard the word Form-Based Code from Heather Baker. Is Heather here? No. Heather was running the NPO, the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance Steering Committee, and I was a new planning commissioner on that committee, steering committee. And Heather had this great idea, she said, "Let's have Form-Based Coding for the mesa." And I didn't know what she was talking about. I thought, "Well, does that mean we're going to have more forms? Like, people have to fill out more paperwork to get more stuff because everyone in the mesa, you know, really carefully wants to delineate what their neighbors can do?" And I thought, "That's not going to be great, you know, more papers, not really what we needed." Then I went to a workshop, and it was explained that Form-Based Codes actually had to do with forms, as in a geometric form, and that the early Form-Based Coding was based really on environmental study, that the kind of environmental study that goes into looking at, say, a creek corridor, a riparian area, analyzes, "Okay, where are the animals? What are their migration patterns? Where do they go to seek sunlight? Where do they go to get water? Where do they go to get food sources?" It was looking at a very organic approach to habitat. And from that grew the idea of the transect and the application of this more organic analysis to city planning. And that's where much of these original concepts came from. And I love the idea that they look at how the inhabitants of the place already interact. It's already looking at what's going on with the people that live in a particular place. In Santa Barbara, we have the beach, that's our big playground. We go there to recreate and to get sunlight. We have our downtown where we go to get commercial and recreational activity. We have our road structures that get us around, you know, how we get around, entertainment districts, and then we have the mountains for more of our open space, and just to look at it is pleasant. Visiting it is something we do as well. So, something about Form-Based Codes really appeals to me in a big way because it looks at the organic unity of a community and attempts to apply zoning to it in a way that makes a lot of sense and in a way that engages the community in the charrette process and in the planning process. So, I spent probably more time than I really should have reading up on it and getting interested in it. And when the Upper State Street study started to materialize, it was, my hope in particular, I don't know if anybody else in the commission at that time was on board with this, but I certainly was, that we needed a Form-Based Code for what I called uptown, and that it should be a charrette process to decide what does the upper Upper State Street look like as compared to what we think of as downtown. And that process got pretty far. The, I guess it was Transportation and Planning did the walkabouts and the tours. It was very well-attended, it was well-publicized, it was good. And then, when it came time to try to create a Form-Based Code, then it got turned into a Form-Based Design Guideline, and then it was kind of going to be like a charrette. And then, Dan Parlock, the gentleman who was part of this webinar, was asked, you know, "How much would it cost to have you come and do this for us in Santa Barbara?" And we got a price, and at that point, the whole thing got flawed. It was like, goodbye. Goodbye, Form-Based Codes for Santa Barbara. And I thought that was really unfortunate because Upper State Street would be a wonderful target for this kind of charrette process and thinking, it's a constrained area, it's got transportation circulation problems that are only going to be worse, as our general plan has shown us. A lot of improvements could be made, but it would cost money. And Mr. Justice said, "Well, what about that cost-benefit question?" And the cost-benefit question for Santa Barbara is, it would be expensive upfront to implement something like this, but it would be a cost savings further down the line because theoretically there would be less contention over individual projects, and property owners would have a much clearer idea of what they were able to build on their property. And it would, all in all, at the end of the day, at least be a break-even and maybe a cost savings. But the upfront money does have to be put there at the beginning. What ended up happening with the Upper State Street study is it got wrapped into a kind of midnight oil, design guidelines for Upper State Street, and I hope some of you have read them. They came out pretty good, but it was a seat-of-the-pants kind of effort as opposed to what could have been possible. And the guidelines have yet to be really enforced or used because they are guidelines, and you can watch what's happening with the Bevmo project to see on the ground what's being built and done and how that does and does not correspond to the Upper State Street design guidelines. And two more things. One is that since Santa Barbara is a charter city, we do have a lot of options available to us in terms of our zoning. This webinar talked about some of the conflicts that could happen with state law or whatever. That's probably not a problem for us so much as a charter city. And the thing I would leave my overview with is that Form-Based Codes kind of have two strong components. One is transformation, greenfield development, taking a blighted area, transforming it. But the other is preservation for a built environment that is cherished and that we want to preserve, and we want to make it really very clear as a community how that preservation would look. So, it really has two useful areas. Transformation in Santa Barbara, I don't know, the airport, that's the only really big pieces of property we have. There's the Lacumbra Plaza area, and I was wondering about that when we were watching the webinar, when I saw them take that big chunk of property, and then they divided it up into streets, and I thought, "How's that going to happen?" That would be an interesting discussion. an interesting discussion from a legal perspective, is how we would get from the giant property to roads. That would be transformation. But the primary use in Santa Barbara would be historic preservation, without doubt. That is what I would look for it to provide.
Chair Bartlett, might I add a few comments as well?
Please add in.
I was happy that we did have that opportunity to attend the two-day 101 course. And then when we received this email offering a webinar for 30 days for $50, I thought it was a great deal. The, our idea behind sharing this with you today, we also put an email out to other board and commission members and council was for general information, just the beginning of the education process. We have, as a result of the Plan Santa Barbara General Plan Update, heard from a number of people in the community that have an awareness of what form-based codes are and thought that they could be a good tool for Santa Barbara, just as Commissioner Jacobs talked about, in special areas of the community for historic preservation, for a prescriptive direction towards not full-scale transformation, but evolution, which I think we're anticipating in our general plan update, looking ahead for the future. So we do have a policy in the proposed general plan update that encourages consideration of form-based codes for certain areas of the community. And I think it's a really good fit for our community and a way to move forward in that design review alone does most of the heavy lifting for our built environment, the output of development for our community. And our zoning code is quite antiquated, and we have taken the approach of adding new ideas on top of old in our zoning code. And we have relied quite a bit on the discretion of review boards, both the design review boards and the land use planning commission decision-making. And I think that the form-based code approach or variation, I also want to talk about the hybrid, is a good way forward for Santa Barbara to give a little more certainty to where development is appropriate, where is it desired, at what scale is it desired. Again, listening to what the community, we've all been talking about for the last four or five years, the way that we've always done it has been a struggle and hasn't necessarily produced the outcome that people are looking for. So I think this new approach could really be helpful to us. There was a brief part of the presentation where they mentioned hybrid. And I don't know if you sensed, but there's a little tension in whether or not hybrid or other-than-pure-form approaches are good. Well, that's been an evolution in the institute and practitioners of form-based codes. And I know this was some time ago, where's the date on this? I also made this zoning practice magazine available to the planning commission, I can tell because we took it apart, and I know we made copies of these things for you. And it was about the hybrid coding. And there's just a few quotes in this article that I wanted to read. "A pure-form-based code can be easier to implement in a newer, growing community because new development tends to create, to occur upon a clean slate. But the hybrid approach," which I'll talk a little bit more about, I think is appropriate in the historic preservation mode and a very well-defined community that we already have. There's another quote in here. "The solution may be to tailor the height restrictions to prevent the out-of-scale construction, but deem the existing structures which violate that restriction conforming." Again, there were a lot of things talked about in the webinar today, but I did want to touch on those two things. One is because there's so much in our community that we value that is non-conforming now to the zoning ordinance and depending on what shape these future form-based code areas take, the consideration of preservation and trying to keep things that work instead of calling them non-conforming. And they did touch on that a little bit. It's a detail to think about, but I just wanted to use it as an example that there's a tremendous amount of resource and information about form-based codes. And when the time comes when the city undertakes it again, Mr. Dan?
Parlock.
Parlock. He wanted very much to come and do the Upper State Street guidelines. And the practice has been growing and there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of resources that would be available to us, a lot of communities that have undertaken the hybrid approach, which part of the hybrid approach is caring a little bit more about the land use. When you listen sometimes to purists on the form-based code, they'll really downplay the importance of land use. Well, one reason why I really believe land use is important in this community is, again, what we've been talking about, affordable housing in our community and rental housing and densities that work in densities in terms of the number of people to create community, the resources used. So we have, I think we would have an interest in having a hybrid approach that ensures some of our really important land use policies are also blended with a good form-based code that is compatible with our design review process. That was one last point I wanted to make, is that for Santa Barbara, the design review process is critical. And again, I don't think it has to be disregarded or, you know, would have to be so radically changed. I think form-based code could really help and complement the design review process rather than replace it, which might be what some people could think that this webinar was about. But I think there's a good hybrid mix that, per our policies, we will get to, I believe and I hope, maybe not in the next couple of years, but hopefully shortly thereafter, could be a priority implementation for the city.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to kind of have a refresher and really kind of get this back into the discussion mode. And I think the real distinction for me is that the form-based codes really focus on what's the public realm, the space between buildings, whether it be, you know, open space or streets or sidewalks or parks. That's the area that the public lives in. And the traditional codes really focus on what's going on within your property lines or within the building that you're proposing. And it really doesn't regulate where that mass is being placed on the property, other than, unless there's specific setbacks. But, you know, in the case of those strip shopping centers that we saw the examples of, obviously, that's kind of what happened on Outer State Street. And, you know, a form-based code really would direct where you want the building placement, how porous are the street fronts, are the front doors actually in the front or are they on the back where the parking lot is. And so it really addresses, I think, the public attributes that we all experience on a daily basis. So I think in that sense, it really opens up a whole nother area of design for us to take into consideration. I mean, the streets and the sidewalks are our public realm as much as the buildings. So we should look at all of it in context rather than only looking at what happens parcel by parcel. So I think this is a good way to kind of stitch that together. And I think the form-based codes also acknowledge that, you know, based on those walking distances, that we have nodes within the town that are centers. And then how do we have the connectivity from the neighborhoods to those centers? And what they talk about in terms of the transect, they're sort of the density zone, starting from rural being, you know, just, you know, the greenfield areas clear down to the urban core being the most dense of the transects. And I think they have six gradations laid out in the form-based code, you know, where you roll into suburban and then urban and then the shopping centers and then the urban core where you get the taller buildings. So it kind of acknowledges all those different densities that occur within a community, but it isn't just one core that then fans out. There's a series of subcores, if you will, that really stitch together the community. And I think it really maps all of that rather than having just one big land use category for a large area. It does recognize those nodes and places that are already being used in a different way, which is pretty much how downtown was developed anyway. So I think downtown, it helps reinforce and protect what we have. And in the other areas, it helps us evolve into what we like about downtown so that hopefully we can have some of those attributes in other areas. So I think it does different things in different areas of the cities. And hopefully, you know, if we can start out on a small basis and kind of take the most important areas and deal with them first and try out and let people get comfortable with how it works and really get the community buy-in as you develop, you know, the goals and wish lists for the community rather than having a battleground with every particular project that comes before us. I think it'd be good to get ahead of the curve that way. And I think it's an incentive for people to actually redevelop and improve their properties if there's more certainty as to what the vision is before you go into it. So, anyway, any comments from others?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Over a year ago, when I first started hearing about form-based codes, I went to their website and looked at it. And I wish I had looked at it before I came today because I think it must have changed from this presentation. It does seem to be something that's evolving. And that one, the one that I saw, talked about the concern about traditional zoning with the separation of uses. Well, this is something that we don't have anyway because we have pyramid zoning. And, you know, sense of place, this town certainly downtown has it to a great degree. And this is one of the things they're trying to promote. And when I saw the slide showing the downtown with the wide sidewalks and the trees, you know, you just look at State Street and it's an even better example of what that slide showed.
There were actually several photographs in their presentation a couple of years ago of Santa Barbara as being a good example, so.
Yeah, yeah. So that was kind of my feeling. Well, you know, why do we need to go there given that what we already have is so much of an illustration of what they seem to be driving for? So I can see certainly Outer State Street doesn't have a sense of place and it certainly could use some sort of direction. And of course, that's what we were heading toward with the Upper State Street study, which did not get completed. So I think we already have, as I said, much of what this is trying to promote. And so perhaps, as was, I think Betty even mentioned, you know, for specific smaller areas, maybe it would be something to look at for there. But if you, now I'm also remembering the photograph of the staff out going throughout the community. And I guess that's what's meant by the sentence, I think from what you said, what was it, "All spaces must be calibrated along the transect." Sounds very expensive. But perhaps in some smaller areas, you know, it looks as if it involves a lot of staff time to get the, you know, the documentation that they were talking about of what's on the ground. So I guess I have, I see possibilities with it, but I think what we've got, so often with planning in Santa Barbara, is we're already there.
Well, we're lucky to have good examples to look to. I mean, Ventura is probably the furthest along and the closest to us. So I think we can really learn from what they've been doing without having to reinvent the wheel totally. And, you know, we don't maybe need it in the same way they did. Maybe we're doing it more for the preservation and they're doing it more for redevelopment. So we need to look at it for how we want to use it and adapt the parts that we want, not just take it all verbatim. And we're lucky. We do have a head start. We know what we want. How do we get more of it and how do we preserve what we have? So that's the real goal.
Chair, oh. I just wanted to make a comment about, we have lots of pieces of form-based coding in terms of ideas of what we want to do to protect historic resources, these buffering ideas, the idea of a new setback in the downtown and commercial property. If you remember that conversation, people said, "Well, why don't we create a new five-foot variable setback, but let's not put it on State Street?" I mean, a lot of the ideas that come out of the community members, as well as the engaged professionals and volunteers in the community, such as yourselves, are bits and pieces that would fit well together in a cohesive form-based code. And that's what I see. I see that we cobble it together rather than do it, you know, intentionally. So, anyway.
Ms. Schwartz, you've had your light on.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. To pick up on what Ms. Weiss just said, what struck me in watching and hearing the webinar today is that not only have we been utilizing or cobbling together elements of form-based coding, but also, being that the price tag is so large, as Ms. Jacobs mentioned, to do this wholesale or to adopt the whole schematic, so to speak, I'm wondering if, and I would look to the chair and Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Weiss to comment from their knowledge, could we not adopt or explore adopting aspects of form-based coding in an enhanced way than we already have that would include all stakeholders in the community, as was mentioned, is so critical, the business community, neighborhood associations and so forth. Because I think we can do better in terms of transforming certain microneighborhoods, better protecting our historic resources. And so what's already been proposed in some areas, the buffers and others, but to take it a step further, I don't see anything prohibiting us from identifying elements of form-based coding that we could consider and possibly adopt that would continue to move us in the direction that does honor and protect place because that, to me, is what Santa Barbara is all about and what continues to draw, you know, both visitors and residents here. That would be my initial take, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Any response to that? Well, go ahead.
And is it fair to say how much it actually was going to cost?
It was somewhere.
John wants to know.
I think it was somewhere around $300.
Oh, it was $300? When I first heard it, it was $150,000 for the time period, the review, the charrette. Did the price go up by the time we actually got a finished bid? Because there's also the investment of staff time, which would add to it.
In the Upper State Street area, since we did the Upper State Street study, we had a lot of information started. And I think we were looking to have some efficiency and savings from that. I just seem to recall some finance committee report. It may have been the combination of the, and I'm sorry I don't have it in front of me, but I know at the time for Upper State Street, we were looking at both form-based coding design and some transportation system improvements. And I think we were going to maybe do them together. Ms. Commissioner Justus, I know, attended some meetings where we were talking about this as it started to unravel and came up with the compromise of, well, don't completely unravel this. Take what you've got and try to come up with some way to use it. But anyway, the number in my head from those discussions is, could have been the combination, and I believe it was close to $400,000, like $375,000. But that could have involved, again, more transportation along with form-based code.
Well, and I think there's also community resources and involvement that could come into play if we were serious about implementing. AIA, you know, a lot of the times, we have to model buildings we're proposing, show them in context. So between all of us in the community, we could take the city chunk by chunk and create a 3D model base that could be a good starting point so that you're not hiring a consultant to start from scratch and do everything. So, you know, if it really was the consensus of the community to move in that direction, I think you could work into it incrementally with a lot of community involvement and volunteer effort rather than paying an outside consultant to do everything. But I think, you know, obviously, you would need a commitment that that would get utilized so it just isn't a wasted effort as well. And I think that's how Ventura got quite a ways into theirs as well. So.
Mr. Chair?
I think we should look at those examples. Yes, Ms. Jacobs?
The, I wanted to just reemphasize that the form-based code development process, the charrette aspect of it, is so much more inclusive of the community than what we've done at a homegrown level. And we might get 60 people to come to a meeting and say, "Wow, that was really good." They're talking thousands of people, hundreds of people, a lot of community members, not the blue ribbon, not the stakeholder, everybody. And so when they give a price like that, they are creating a big net to bring in a very large section of the community. And that's part of what it, what it goes to and why it's different from what we've traditionally done with our commissions and our advisory groups and our civic planners. It's very different in its public outreach aspect. It's very different in its public outreach aspect.
All right. Ms. Schwartz?
Mr. Chair, what's occurred to me also is there are various ways to measure cost. In this sense, there's cost of bringing a consultant or an expert to the community to guide us. But we've also heard from applicants and we've just experienced ourselves, the cost of lack of clarity, lack of concreteness and consistency or predictability for applicants bringing projects to the city creates another layer of cost. It's not only their cost, but it's city resources, city planning, et cetera, resources. So, I think it would actually be prudent to weigh the upfront investment or that cost with what we're already absorbing in these other aspects of costs to how we're doing business in the city. So, I would suggest that we balance that and weigh that as we make some of these decisions.
That's a good point. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to take a little different perspective. And it's not to say that folks who are strongly behind form-based codes are going in a different direction, but I look at this as, what's the problem we're trying to solve if form-based code or form-based coding is the problem? And I think what we're looking at is a desire to revitalize and invigorate the community at a neighborhood, block-by-block level. And secondly, as Charmaine said, there's a transformative piece which relates to that. And then there's a preservation piece, which is Santa Barbara's DNA. And I would submit to you that if you look around this room and see the drawings on the walls, there, we're, you know, a long ways towards form-based coding by just looking at what the vision has been for this city for a number of years. And State Street is indicative of that. So, but what does form-based code, how does it really hit the ground? Somebody asked about, Ms. Schwartz, you talked about specifics. And the specifics are, from my perspective, form-based coding is a transformative tool to go from parcel-by-parcel planning to block-by-block planning. And that was one of my big points in the Outer State Street study, was to try to make that paradigm shift to block-by-block approach to things. But what do we have that we can apply form-based coding to on a block-by-block or larger basis? Not very many places in the city. Outer State Street is a nightmare of small irregularly shaped parcels with differing ownerships. Getting those property owners on the same page is a monumental challenge. So, I think that's a very steep driveway to achieve. Lacumba Plaza and Five Points is the only real place in Outer State Street where the rubber hits the road and you have that placemaking-type opportunity to apply this task. And like we suggested, it's a specific plan approach would help. And that is my little light bulb of optimism here. But Lacumba Plaza is complex, to say the least, in terms of the ownership patterns, the easements, the circulation, all of the nuts and crazy things that go into that piece. But I want to hold out the possibility that over time, the city can send a message to the multiple owners that it's in their best interest and we want to reward the behavior that would lead to a modernizing of that particular area of town. The only other place that I see is the funk zone, because that's an area that could be revitalized and given new life. And at the same time, we don't want to take justification too far, because that takes away from the old funkiness or the old style Santa Barbara, which we have a real value for. So, what, how, where do we go from here? And I know how difficult public participation can be. And I think that's a steep driveway, because if you can't get the folks on board in the community to do something on a wholesale level, it won't get done and you'll waste hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to get there. And what we found in Carpinteria was the most efficient and the most effective, when we did the redevelopment, the downtown revitalization specific plan, was go door-to-door, talk one-on-one with store owners and shop operators and ask them what they wanted, what they liked, what they didn't like, and adjust it accordingly. And what you've got today is Linden Avenue, and it works. And it works in a town that's very different, but it has not been gentrified by a planning effort. So, what I think needs to happen is we focus in on what are the mechanisms to implement the concept in areas and spots of the city, in sub-neighborhoods, in little blocks of blocks. And to me, it would be not doing the major study, it would be incentive-making for incentives in terms of process expediting for groups of property owners to come in and not be slowed down in their interests to make their hood, their block, work better. The city has the most complicated review process of any place in the state of California. If you look at the ratio of planners to population, planners to acreage, all over the state. And that's one of the reasons we have a great city. But I don't want to say we need to add another layer of review to get something we want, because it won't happen in lean times and the market's not going to support it. So, you go in surgically into the zoning ordinance, the Development Plan Part 2887-300, and you make some revisions that add options and opportunities for folks to do things differently, if they see a need, if they think it works for them and it works for the city. And you apply specific plans to get, to help make that happen. And the city, in recent times, has used specific plans for such things as Cottage Hospital and Veronica Meadows. My own thinking on that, that's not what specific plans were intended to do. Specific plans were intended to deal with infrastructure, multiple property ownerships, and creating community benefits and infrastructure that works for the community. And Ojai's done it, Carpentry has done it, the city's done it with the Rancho Arroyo specific plan, and we need to get back to that. So, there's an area where we might be able to focus it, but I think we need to be very strategic if we do it, as to where we do it, so it doesn't cost so much that it never gets traction.
Points well taken. Ms. Schwartz, your light is still on?
Well, yes, I have a question that came to me from hearing Mr. Justice's comments. We don't, of course, we don't want to add, we afford to add another layer of review, but it struck me, so perhaps someone can educate me if I misunderstood, that this, in fact, would streamline, form-based coding, I thought with its clarity and concreteness of regulation, would, at least over time, I don't know about initially, streamline and therefore remove layers of review, and I'll say bureaucracy for lack of another term, for applicants and for the city. Am I misunderstanding, Ms. Jacobs or Mr. Chair, from your knowledge of form-based coding?
My understanding, and from what I've heard from other cities, is that you are right, that actually layers of approval are shed over time, costs go down, and it actually becomes much simpler than what we currently have. What we currently have is the most complex, difficult-to-deal-with animal imaginable. No one would ever set out and say, "Let's do it like that." You know, that would just be insane. What form-based codes does is it achieves a lot of the same kind of outcomes, but it is more streamlined and over time, in other cities, has been more cost-effective. But only at the point that it reaches actual code. If it's just to want to kind of sort of have that thing, then it is what Mr. Justice is describing. It's just one more leg on a multi-legged animal that makes the whole thing more difficult to participate in. It only really starts to become economic at economically good at a point where it becomes a code.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, Mr. Justice?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Vincent.[1222.58][1222.58](Laughter). He's been overly silent today, and I don't want to let this meeting end without pressing him for his expertise in terms of the practicality of removing layers of review in order to facilitate innovation, creativity and community benefit.
Oh, Mr. Chair, as you know, I always consider a meeting to be good if I haven't had to say anything. But I will take the bait. You know, sitting here, and I've been talking to Ms. Weiss and kind of making my own thoughts and judgments about this. And really legally, there are very few impediments legally for the city to achieve a form-based code if it has the political and community consensus to get there. The big thing, the big impediment that I heard from today's webinar is that the form-based code is an expression of consensus. And my observations from Plan Santa Barbara is an utter lack of consensus for the vision of this community. And so, the, I think that Mr. Justice's suggestion of specific plans that would basically, I mean, it's an invitation to the property owners. I live in the Upper State Street neighborhood area, and I, so I'm very familiar with the parcels up there and how they function truly independently of each other. And that independence is what prevents them from really functioning in a way that makes it a city center or a community center. It's one shopping center and then another shopping center. I mean, the Loretto Plaza example with the Bollards is the quintessential example of the lack of participation with one another. And the specific plan opportunity is available. It's just a matter of finding a way that the property owners see an incentive. I recently used the Whole Foods example again. There's a, there was a project where the applicant was dying to do a project. The property owner wanted to revitalize the site. And the way the city approached the site and the way the city approached the review process, it started a very top-down approach and told the property owner, "Well, if you want what you want, you're going to have this, this and this as well." And it got to a point where the property owner said, "I just can't do all of that." And so, that's another, I mean, that's just another cautionary tale I see of the form-based code is, the more bells and whistles you throw in your form-based code and the more you say, "We want the, we want the uses, but we also want all this other stuff. We want the big, nice sidewalks and, by the way, you get to pay for those." The one mention, you know, we were looking at State Street as an example. State Street, that was created by the city. The city, through the redevelopment agency, by and large, funded what you see as the pedestrian mall on State Street. It took right-of-way and turned it into sidewalk instead of parking. I mean, it's just, there's a lot going on there, but the big thing is that the city was the leader on that, as opposed to expecting the property owners to come up and do everything for the community, as well as try to make their projects viable economically. So, there's my two cents. But it's, as I said, legally, there are few impediments to achieving it. It's for the community to come together and have that common vision that's going to get you to your form-based code.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Lodge?
Thank you. And I'm sure that is indeed the problem in trying to do something like getting the property owners together to do that. And the city did step in, I think it was with the, and it was really the business people who came up with the parking district. It was like one of the first in the state. And it was the parking district that took the parking off State Street and widened the sidewalks and all of that. That was even before the redevelopment agency. And so, but as I said, and it was the threat of Lacumba Plaza. Lacumba Plaza went in and they knew they had to have parking for, to keep customers coming downtown. And then, of course, finally, we had to go to Paseo Nuevo and all of that. I just want, some of the things that were in the presentation, the webinar, that are definitely not Santa Barbara. They said, "Don't use guidelines, don't rely on design review boards, and don't set an architectural theme." These are the things that said we shouldn't, communities shouldn't do. But I think it works. And one of the things in my initial look at the website for the Form-Based Code Institute that, and in thinking about how it would work, is where you establish a form, you know, a building form, you know, how, you know, not say what could be in it, but just, you know, this is your building envelope and this is how high and this is what the setbacks need to be. And you can, within that, you can do whatever you want. And then presumably, people can go ahead and they don't have all this need for all of the review. I don't think that ever happened in Santa Barbara, but one issue that wasn't mentioned, and particularly when they, in the webinar, they mentioned Lake Tahoe doing something like this, is nowhere does there, did anybody say anything about views? And that is, that is so much a part of Santa Barbara and so important to preserve that I'm not sure how it would work with that. And because of that, maybe Santa Barbara needs to stay where it's more with a project-by-project basis, but, or to do a specific plan, which does take all of the views into consideration.
Ms. Jacobs? And also, we have about 10 more minutes before Commissioner Justice and I need to leave.
Yeah, we'll wrap it up. I don't know if you remember, I think it was when they were, when they, at the seminar we went to, they talked specifically about Lake Tahoe and the project they were doing there, which is an enormous project specifically because they are including all the views. They're including the entire Tahoe Basin as part of their package, you know, that's, and the views are very much part of it. So, in a way, they're kind of going back to those environmental analysis roots of the whole concept. That was a couple of years ago. I don't know how it turned out, but views were certainly part of that and the access to nature and someone.
Right. That's part of that whole three-dimensional building envelope is, you know, not only how does it address the street, but where do you want to identify reserves for open space? Where do you need building retreat to preserve the views? All those things are really taken into consideration, as opposed to just a blanket FAR and then you can put it anywhere you want on the site. So, I think it does help give you the best of both. Other comments? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of everything I wrote down to chat about has been spoken of. I'd just like to, I think, echo a couple of things Commissioner Justice said. And one was inclusion of the funk zone. I had that down on my list. And I think also the Milpus Corridor, just another example of multiple businesses that could never possibly be put in the same room as a challenge would be another area, too. I share his concern over the process going forward on who's in the room. It's one thing to pack a room full of cheerleaders, and it's another thing to accurately recognize the burden of engaging those who feel threatened or those who just don't believe in what you're trying to do. And that's the burden, quite frankly. That's the burden that I think, from an armchair quarterback mostly, looking back on Plan Santa Barbara, that had trouble. I was very heartened by early in the presentation where they mentioned in one example that the chamber, a chamber of commerce led the charge for it. I was disheartened somewhere in the conversation, not out of personal belief, but just disheartened too, to see a couple of comments on... too, to see a couple of comments on reduction of automobile use and removal of thorough fares into more of a meandering type of road system. And I say that only because, as you know, in this town, there's a rather vocal and engaged group that would see that as you're taking my car away. And already, we'd have trenches being dug where we're trying to bring those people in and find a way to get them to be supportive, but we've already, we've already portrayed that one of the goals has been to take my car away. So those are really the only two points. I like the example of finding an area and going door-to-door, and I think that's, that's a great idea. I think that's what it'll take, and I'm looking forward to learning more about this.
Well, your comments bring to mind a couple of observations. One is that we've had an extreme lack of involvement from property owners, especially in the Upper State Street study, whereas downtown, people come out of the woodwork. You've got the downtown organization and the, you know, the parking districts, everybody gets involved. But uptown, we didn't get much from property owners in terms of involvement or vision or wanting to work together or seeing the possibilities. So until they really want to come together, I mean, I like Mr. Justice's ideas, and that's where we have the most opportunity, but we need to have property owner engagement to get there. So that's one thing. The other was your comment, you know, about talking about the streets and changing that and people feeling like they're threatened or were going to limit their automobile use. I think it's the contrary with, with form-based zones. We've actually increased the area that we're looking at, design-wise, and what we want to see. We're adding the public realm, which is the streets and the sidewalks, where now, we just look at parcel-by-parcel, and people don't have a say, really. It's, currently, it's public works realm, not public realm. So, you know, if they want to really have more engagement and develop the streets and have them be the experience they're looking for, I think that form-based would actually expand that opportunity rather than limit it. So that would be my take. Mr. Chair. Mr. Justice?
Two last points. First, I think that I always come back to the first law of public administration, which is if you can't convince your public that their quality of life will suffer if the problem goes unresolved, your project is living on borrowed time. And I don't think we can do that with this, with this approach. What I think we can do is to use it as an example of sound community planning and use it to augment the dozen or so principles in the vision page in the city's general plan update that I've continued to suggest be used as guidance for making that, that finding for development plans. That at least gives you a little more suggested direction, albeit obtuse. It's still acknowledging that that's one of the components of sound community planning, which was the underlying concept of why we're here talking about this, is because we must think it's going to contribute to a better community. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a discussion topic. So that's one, that's one suggestion as to how to inch it forward without the baggage of expending a tremendous amount of energy to try to get results in something that is basically voluntary.
Well, before we wrap up today, I'd like to maybe give Danny some feedback as to whether or not the rest of the commissioners are interested in seeing the next iteration, which is longer and more involved than this one. This was pretty much the introductory overview, and I think you said that it would be available next week if we are so inclined?
Yeah, but I'd like to, and you can also watch it by ourselves, you know, because we can give you that password. I want to read it to you, because I'm not sure that it's actually appropriate. It's not like the 201. The name of it is Integrating More Sustainable Design Into Form-Based Codes. The description is, "Form-based codes are by definition sustainable. Their capacity to produce compact mixed-use urbanism makes them an essential tool in efforts to create sustainable communities. The two-and-a-half-hour recorded webinar covers the key elements of sustainable design that may be regulated by form-based codes, including renewable energy systems, stormwater and wastewater conservation, urban agriculture, green roofs, landscaping, community-based transportation, and others. Instructors use specific case studies to illustrate these elements drawing upon their work from across the country. They also discuss effective community participation strategies that advance sustainable designs in form-based codes." So it's, it seems like it skipped a couple of steps and gone to the really advanced detail stuff, which is why I'm not sure that it's, you know, it's not, I'm not sure if it's worth the commission's combined time, but it's up to...
You have it available for how much longer, then?
Till November 1st.
November 1st?
We'll email you if we want that.
I'll just, I'll forward it to you, yeah.
That'd be great. Okay.
So do I take it that we won't, we won't meet next week?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was under the assumption it was more like Form-Based 201, maybe the next level, but it sounds like it's a specific...
Right, it seems like, like I said, it skipped a couple of steps. So that would be our recommendation, but the room is available and our, you know, we're available. So it's up to the commission.
Okay. Great. All right, well, that concludes this discussion item. Is there anything else, then, under our administrative agenda, or any other liaison reports or committee reports since we met last week?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I know a couple of us need to leave soon. This morning, I attended the Downtown Parking Committee. I'm just going to give you highlights on one intensively discussed topic, and that's the acceptance of credit cards in the downtown lots. The equipment is already in place, but the remaining work is connecting the computers between the kiosks and the city finance systems. There's a plan for what they're calling a soft rollout as of October 1st, starting with Lot 6. And then by mid-October, all of the lots will convert. There's going to be extensive new training for the kiosk staff with a full rollout, that is MasterCard, Visa, and Discover accepted and with all staff trained by mid-November in time for the holiday season. Signage is still being explored. That was a topic of keen interest, and the city will look at its guidelines for signage in conjunction with the signage required by the credit card companies. So they'll, they'll have to blend that to make sure that they're still meeting the credit card company standards. They wanted to underscore, or city staff did, Browning Allen, that there is no intention of removing the staff from the kiosks. They realize that's a critical element of customer service for those coming in and out of the lots, whether you're locals or we have visitors. And apparently, there was quite an adverse reaction at the Paseo Nuevo lots, where the staff had been removed from those kiosks. So I think there's going to be a reversal of that practice. And it was interesting also to hear, and I'll conclude with this, Mr. Chair, that the, the element of accepting checks seems to be an ongoing topic of concern. About 1% of the checks are problematic, they're unprocessable, and it's either due to insufficient funds or something else. And that results in approximately $100,000 in lost revenue for the city per year. There wasn't an opinion about eliminating the allowance of checks, but they're just keeping that topic alive to determine how, you know, and to, and to monitor the revenue loss to determine when or if that procedure or that practice might need to be changed. And given our time constraint, I'll leave it on that.
Great. Well, thank you. Any other reports? If not, I will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.